Order. If you all will join me and stand in the pledge of allegiance, remain standing for the invocation to be given by Darren Brock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand with me, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just praise you tonight. We just thank you that we live in a country that we can come together and assemble and govern ourselves, Lord, that we elect our leaders and, Lord, that you've chosen us on this night to make decisions for the city. Lord, I just ask you to be with us tonight. Just give us wisdom, Lord. Give us forethought and give us understanding that any decisions made are for the future and can have long lasting impact, Lord. So, we just ask for wisdom and guidance. We just ask that all we do honors you in every way, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Here.
Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Next item is the consent agenda, which contains the Lowell City Council minutes, the regular meeting, October 19, 2010, the Lowell City Council minutes, special meetings, September 9, 2010, as amended, and the financial statement for October 2010.
Mr. Mayor, can we separate out the meeting from the last one, from the other two? I wasn't present for the last meeting, so I wouldn't be able to consciously be able to vote on that one.
Does the council want to separate the consent agenda?
I have a problem with that. That's fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to separate out the 29th or 19th?
The 19th from the other two. Yes, sir.
Okay, the consent agenda has been revised to include the Lowell City Council minutes, the regular meeting, October 19, and the financial statement for October 2010. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Should we move?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Next item is a request to amend the agenda.
The 19th, now you speak. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of October 19th.
Please don't.
Second.
Sorry. Don't? Oh, I'm sorry.
These are the, um...
Do we have a second?
Second.
There was a second. Who was the motion?
Roll call, please.
Wait, please, because I, we have another amendment. Okay, that was Darren. Who was the second?
Keith.
I received, after the packet was sent out, I received an email from Paula Allred, who requested that the minutes be additionally amended, and she requested, if you pass, take one, pass them down, take one, pass them down. I have a new page three that reflects that not only, well, it changed from Mr. Schein stated he has a petition to include that, but also to add the sentence, said petition was not presented to the full council, to the mayor, or to the city clerk, further clarifying that some, at least of the council, never saw it and were not aware of it.
Well, I just thought by stating that he said he had it wasn't really clear. It was the issue that was presented by the citizen that brought it to my attention was that the actual minutes were not presented essentially for file where people had signed the...
The only thing I can say on that is, I did read that petition, and I did show the pages that I had here, if anybody wanted to see them, and nobody even responded to that.
Okay. Like I said, that was, the citizen brought it to my attention that it wasn't on file, and that was his concern, that it be noted it wasn't on file.
But, my point is, I did present them because I said, if anybody wants to read them, I have them here.
And I submitted it to the group to see if anybody else agreed that that needed to be included.
We believe that the petition does need to be attached to the minutes to say, to make the statement that they were presented, because they were never given to me or the mayor for attachment to the minutes. And that's why the initial change to the minutes was done, and now this additional change is being requested. So, it's up to y'all how you want to, if you want to go with the original amended minutes, the original minutes, the original amended minutes, or if you want to approve the Second Amendment.
I don't see anything, any reason for the second. I think it's just a redundant. Take the fifth amendment?
We have a motion and a second to the original amendment. It's on the floor.
I'll remove my second.
I can withdraw my motion if we want to present a new one. I'm fine with it.
So, we need a motion, how they want to deal with it. We need a motion, how they want to deal with it. If they want to do the Second Amendment, or if they want to, what the council wants to do. We need a motion.
About these minutes? We need a motion from the council of what to do about these minutes of the September 9 meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we include all amendments to the final minutes.
Second.
Marty seconded.
Include them all.
We need a vote. We need a vote.
Roll call, please.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
No.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yeah.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
The consent agenda was approved as presented. Next item is to amend the agenda. Consideration of a request by Benton County Regional Solid Waste Management District Board. And if, and if request is approved, consider appropriation of funds memo to authorize a transfer of unallocated funds in the 2010 amended general fund budget to the administration budget for the purposes of meeting unbudgeted expenditures. The agenda item is to be placed immediately prior to new business item F. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Should we move?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Next item is a public forum. Tonight, the public forum will be restricted to two minutes. First person, Guy Shoemaker.
Guy Shoemaker, 315 Center Drive, Lowell. I questioned this council's action last month, appointing a city clerk, the treasurer, for the start in one January 2011. January 2011, 50% of this council will not be there. We'll have a new mayor. We'll have a new city clerk. Now, go ahead and laugh, Mike. I don't think it's funny. I think it's very serious. I do not feel that you had the right to impose upon the new council, the new mayor and people, somebody that the incoming mayor has not said yea or nay to. Common sense and proper decor calls for a little bit of coordination. It was not done. And I believe Perry knew about it. Why he's doing this, I have no idea. And I also, see, I want to talk on the, on A, on the commissioners, because I feel the same way there. You have a new council, a new mayor, a crew coming in. Let them decide who is going to do what. Now, I know this lady might be Mary Mason's friend. I couldn't care less. I couldn't care less if she was even my friend. I don't even know the lady. But I think you did wrong. Thank you. And one thing, I think you should withdraw that appointment ASAP. Thank you.
Carol Harmon.
Mayor, on November 6, friends of the Lowell Animal Shelter went to Sam's Furniture in Springdale to have an adoption day for pets. Lowell was there, Rogers, two clinics from Rogers was there, Springdale and Fedwell was there. We took six dogs from Lowell and about six or seven cats. All six dogs were adopted. One cat was adopted and one cat was pending out of all that we have taken. We plan to do this again in the spring, at Sam's Furniture again, and we look forward to doing this in the summer and maybe several times in the spring next year, depending on what our population is at the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Donnie. Donnie Gray.
My name's Donnie Gray, and I'm a five-year resident of the city of Lowell.
Your address, please.
The first thing that I would like to say...
Sir, your address, please. Your address, please, for the record.
118 Todd Place. The first thing I would like to say that is that I don't think two minutes is enough for anyone to really state their case. It makes me think that you don't really want to hear what I say, but I'm wasting time, so I'll get on with it. I was a dog owner up until two days ago. I had a terrier that I'd had for seven years. He got out, and I was charged $25 to retrieve him, which I thought was a fair price. He got out again after my wife had put a new battery in the collar, and at that time I was told that the pickup fee doubled and plus I would have a fine, which I did, I got a citation, that would be anywhere from $50 to $500, which I think is just totally excessive. I think the pickup fee doubling is also a punitive action. I was told by the chief of police that the $25 was to cover pickup cost. I don't understand how the pickup cost could double like that. To me, that's just a punitive action, so there's actually two fines associated with the dog being at large. And my question to you, with these things, why, what is my incentive, if I were to get another animal, what would my incentive be to put my name on it and/or even report it missing if it got out? I think, I think that you need to look at ordinance 668 and see if it's fair. But if my dog got out again, I could, you know, it could cost me as much as $1,000. And this is a terrier. This is not a dog that's terrorizing the neighborhood, or I should say was. I had to let the dog go, because if he got out again, there's no way that I could possibly afford to pay those kinds of fines. Thank you.
Chris Long.
I retract, I don't want to speak.
Ronnie Breeling.
Mayor, if it's all right, I'd like to point to your item, A, B.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of planning commission commissioners for terms ending June 13, 2013. As you know, we, or as you were advised, we had three planning commissioners term that ended in June 13, 2010. I chose rather than to make the appointments at that time to wait till after the election was over. Therefore, we have had two gentlemen from the city of Lowell, well-qualified, come forward and ask to be put on the planning commission. They are Jeff Townsend and Mike Lewis. Jeff, it's, Ronnie, is that who you wanted to talk to about? Come forward at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council. On this item, A, the appointment of the planning commission, if it's my understanding, this is supposed to be advertised in the newspaper about an opening for a spot like on the planning commission. Am I right, Tom?
No, sir.
All right, what is, what is...
Ronnie, the procedure is appointment by the mayor.
I understand that, but when something's available, like a seat's available, like for the planning commissioner, it is to be advertised.
No, sir. There could be a local ordinance that required such. Lowell does not have one that I'm aware of.
Can you check into that?
Sure. I sure will, Ronnie.
Before a seat's appointed?
But there's certainly no state law that requires that.
I wasn't talking about state.
Okay.
Before a seat's appointed.
Okay.
That's all I want to say. I mean, before a seat is appointed.
Okay.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Here again. These people have been sitting on these positions for five months. What is two more months going to hurt? Let's give this new council and mayor a job. Now, what are their qualifications? I don't know. I never saw them, I never heard of them. I, myself, I have, I've been with the Arkansas Plant Association for three years. I attended various training conferences, and when Allen Long was appointed on the planning commission, I lent him my books on planning, so he'd know what his job was. Now, have these people got any prior training, Mayor? Answer me, yes or no? What are their qualifications?
Qualifications are, they're experienced businessmen from large corporations that realize the importance of being business-friendly, bringing people into Lowell, helping them get through the planning process.
Bringing business into Lowell is not the job of the planning commission. The planning commission's job is to ensure that things are properly planned in proper areas of the city. Now, I was taught this in Little Rock by the Arkansas Planning Association. I was taught the same thing in Fort Smith, the same thing in Van Buren, and the same thing at the University of Arkansas in Fayetteville. Now, I don't know. I don't want no planning job. I really don't. That's not my interest, but I think we need people in there that knows a little bit something about, other than their private businesses. Thank you.
I'll ask the candidates to come forward now. If the council has any questions, you may ask them at this time. Jeff Townsend.
Jeff Townsend, 410 Northcrest Avenue, Lowell. Any questions for anything?
Do you have any questions and questions?
Planning, no, but I have to back what Perry said a second ago, that I feel my business and management skills speak for themselves, and I have a vested interest. I live in Lowell, I work in Lowell, our business is here, and I want to be a part of helping it grow the right way and maintain it.
Can we have order here? Because I think it's the council is supposed to be asking the questions.
This is a council question. The public forum is over. Does any councilman have any questions of Jeff?
What is it that interests you in the planning commission? What do you find interesting?
Being involved in the community. That way, I've, I live here, I work here. I haven't been back but about three years, and I just want to be involved and be able to use some of my skills to hopefully help out.
Jeff, have you been involved in community events, things as far as city is concerned?
I have been, not exactly directly through the city, but with Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts I have. I hope I'm a representative of them and a few things like that I've done with the churches.
And how long have you been in Lowell?
Three years back.
Three years.
But I have a vested interest from long-term. I grew up in Northwest Arkansas, and I was gone for about 10 years and just now moved back.
Prior, prior to leaving Lowell, where, how, did you, how long did you live here before you left for 10 years? Did you live in Lowell before that?
Not actually in Lowell. I worked in Lowell with Hunt when they first opened here, but I actually lived in Rogers and Avoca. But I grew up in the area, and I was, I think, I believe I was 26 when I moved out. And I was, I was still with Hunt at that time, but traveling across the country for them.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to kind of direct this toward the planning commission, because I, I know they're all here and I appreciate them being here. Do you guys have any comments you would, or any questions or anything you would like me to ask Mr. Townsend? Do you guys have anything that you would like for us to question on?
I'd like to know how many planning commission meetings I've attended.
That's a good point. Fair question.
How many, how many?
I have none. Zero.
Okay.
Would you go ahead and repeat it so we have it on the recording?
Selena Wright, Selena Wright Brown wanted to know how many planning commission meetings were attended. Is there any, any other questions, or?
Yes, I'd like to address, I mean, in terms of mayor initiatives, their business, but in their business background, I'd like to know how Mr. Townsend, Mr. Lewis feel they could best address balancing the needs between residents and...
I'm not sure I can actually repeat all of that, but...
That's a pretty detailed question. It's going to vary from each individual item that you're addressing, so I really can't answer that the way you worded it. But the way I would approach anything that comes out of there is take a look at both sides of it. What do the citizens see? What are they going to gain? What are they going to lose? What is, what is the city of Lowell as a growing business going to gain and lose? Then find out what the fair balance between everybody is, and just make sure you're judging between that balance and not solely for one side or the other.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
Probably, could I give a little address first? I might answer some questions. I have a passion to make a difference. I've lived in Lowell for four and a half years, but while going to the U of A and earning my degree in financial management, I started working for J.B. Hunt in 1994 at the corporate offices and also at the terminal. Once I graduated, I stayed on with J.B. Hunt, and I worked in various logistical operations, or spent, working in logistical operations in various management roles. And then I also spent two years at the terminal. I also spent eight years serving in the 142nd Field Artillery Unit based in this area. I think my military background keeps me well-grounded and very structure-oriented, but it also instilled in me an ability to adapt and overcome obstacles. Raising a family here in Lowell, and we enjoy the green space that Lowell has provided. We love riding our bikes on the trails at Warden Hill Park, and we also use the BMX bicycle track for fun, and I also do some running on it with, with the kids. I work for Ocean Spray Cranberries. This is a grower-owned cooperative, and we believe in getting, giving back. I'm on our philanthropy committee, and through that, I've been able to work with the Cobblestone Project, working in their community garden, which is located over in Rogers. And that garden provides free, fresh vegetables to some of the kitchens in the area, the soup kitchens in the area. I've also worked with First Tea on their needs and secured funding and buying equipment. I've also met with the Green Team from Altup Planning and Design. This group is nationally known for the Green Works. They're the group that was hired by the Walton Foundation, the Walton Foundation contracted with them to develop the spine of the Northwest Arkansas Razorback Regional Greenway. Trail system is very important, I think, to the community and also to me. I'm a bicycle commuter in the summer, and so I bicycle from Lowell to Bentonville in the summer, so I understand the needs, that the trail needs to be family fun, but also needs to provide transportation means to citizens that who want to be more green and bicycle to other, other communities. My biggest issue, actually, when commuting was getting back over to Lowell and trying to cross at 71B over by Akimbaro when there wasn't a light at Robinson. I have a rule when I ride, and that rule is, I have to make it home alive as my kids need their daddy. So, if you've ever tried to cross 71B at 6:00 in the afternoon or in the evening, it's crazy. So, you know, to get the, all five lanes clear, you know, it can take 10 or 15 minutes, and I actually got myself strung out in the middle lane with both traffics going, and you know, pretty scary. So, hopefully, my experience in transportation, logistics, working as a vendor, a bicycle commuter, a husband, a father, will serve me well and serve the citizens of Lowell well. I would appreciate the council's vote, and I thank you for allowing me to get involved in the city. And also to address one of Guy's concerns, one of the state, state laws or orders is the planning, planning commission shall have the duty and function of promoting public interest in and understanding of the long-term coordinated municipal planning. So, I mean, I want you to know that, you know, we do need to promote this community. Lowell is a great opportunity, being in between Fayetteville, Rogers, Springdale, Bentonville. There's a lot of people that come through here that we have an opportunity to, to show our city to.
I've seen you at one meeting. Have you been attending planning commission meetings, or?
I've either been to one or two. I think one. I've pulled a lot of the minutes to read, and a lot of the city council pulled the minutes and also watched, started watching all the videos that are out there. And it might be good to put the planning commission videos. I don't know if that's possible, or if you record it, just for people, just for citizens to, to watch.
What about the second question from Ms. Brown, right? You want to repeat that?
Oh. Okay, what was that? Sorry.
I'd like to address the business aspect, and I'd like to know how you can plan to balance the needs of business, the relative business with the needs of the residents.
I think for us, our, you know, really understand what the communities, or what the community is looking at, how it wants to grow, and where, I think one thing that was a surprise to me is, like how the state and regional and city, I mean, we have a master plan, but on that master plan, you know, we're missing a huge highway that the state has, has planned. So, I think when you're, we're looking at planning, we need to incorporate really everything that's going on and look, where, where are our neighborhoods, and how can we make those safe? And then how can we provide opportunities for citizens to shop, businesses to provide, come in here and provide jobs, and really, let's say, cautiously grow and understand our dynamics of, if you kind of look at us, I almost think of us as like in Arlington, Texas. You know, you're in between Fort Worth and you're in between Dallas, and both areas are huge. And, you know, in Arlington, you know, they have a lot of, that's where the Cowboys are, and that's where the Rangers are. You know, they provide activities for people to come to, and I really think Lowell has started doing that with some destination locations as far as having fast lanes, the putt-putt golf, which really in the area, if you think about it, is the only putt-putt golf, close to 20 miles, I would believe, if you go to Bentonville, go to Springdale, as far as doing a putt-putt facility. First Tea will bring people in. I just think you bring, just yesterday at Fast Lane's, YMCA was there, and they're looking for a place, and one of the, you know, they mentioned South Rogers. You know, I kind of think, why not North Lowell? You know, there's opportunities, I think, to bring those kind of groups in. not North Lowell? You know, there's opportunities, I think, to bring those kind of groups in.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of said planning commissioners as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table any appointments for a planning commission until after the first of the year due to the fact there's really only one month left between now and the end of the year. And these seats have been open for five years, or five months rather, and there's really no sense in appointing these positions.
Does the council want to table the...
Make a motion? That was a motion.
It was a motion. We need a second. It was a motion. We need a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Marty Latham?
No.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
No.
Paula Allred?
No.
Keith Williams? Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Was that a yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. So that motion does pass, so that is tabled.
Appointments have been tabled.
I would like to say that I think, I think these are great candidates and I would like for us to retain their information because I think these are, these are great candidates for those positions.
Right. I'm not saying anything against the candidates. I'm just saying that it's just not fair for the new coming commission, or new plan, new council and the new mayor.
I would like to thank both of you guys for coming out because it's, it is, it's great to see these people willing to serve their community.
I would like to just ask for a clarification if we can look into it too. I was looking at our website and we show four terms expired this year and three expire next year. And I thought we had it on three. I thought we had two, two, and three. But according to this, one, two, six, and seven, those four positions all expired in 2010 and three, four, and five all expired in 2011. So I just think we need to just clarify that and get that corrected on our website too. So, because I was a little confused by that.
Next item is a proclamation by the mayor for the American Diabetes Month in Lowell. Jeanette will read the proclamation.
Mayor asked me to read this since I are one. City of Lowell, Arkansas, Office of the Mayor of Lowell proclamation. Whereas in the United States, nearly 24 million people, including approximately 250,000 in the state of Arkansas, of which approximately 10,400 are in Benton County, have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications such as heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. And whereas, an additional 57 million people in the United States are at risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas, one out of every three children and one out of every two minorities born today will face a future with diabetes if current trends continue. And whereas, an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic, let it therefore be resolved that I, Perry Long, Mayor of Lowell, do hereby proclaim November 2010 to be American Diabetes Month in Lowell. I encourage all Arkansans to recognize American Diabetes Month and join the American Diabetes Association's movement to stop diabetes and confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease. And witness where I have here and to set my hand in this November 16, 2010, cause this seal to be affixed. Perry Long, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is an appropriation of funds memo to authorize a transfer of unallocated funds from the Capital Improvement Bond Fund for the purpose of meeting unbudgeted expenditures. This request is to run a sewer line of 633 feet west of North Gold Springs Road along the north side of State Highway 264 at a total cost of approximately $120,000 estimated by the engineers.
Mr. Mayor, will we be reimbursed by, will we be reimbursed from hookup fees or anything as that site develops out?
As the site develops out, we'll be reimbursed at five cents a foot.
Okay. Will that cover the $120,000?
No, sir. I-540 was set up. The five cent fee covers about 70% of the cost. The rest of it is borne by the taxpayers to improve our economic development.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of funds as presented. Roll call, please.
Who's the second?
Jerry.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
This will be appropriation of funds memo number 13-2010.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution declaring surplus equipment and prescribing the method of selling the equipment. I'll have a list. This is cell phones. And Eric will advertise it for bids and try to dispose of it that way.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question on this. Is it, is there a life that you put on phones two years? Or is there like a certain, when it goes, it's issued and it's in use that X amount of time expires and you move away?
The problem with these phones, they were on AT&amp;T. We couldn't get receptions. We got dropped calls. We've talked to AT&amp;T about it for six months. They never made an effort to fix the problem. We canceled AT&amp;T and went with Sprint. That's what these phones are.
That makes sense.
If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
This will be resolution number 10-17.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance, appointing a deputy city clerk treasurer and designating duties of said deputy city clerk treasurer.
Mr. Mayor, I'm dead set against this again. Why do you want to appoint a deputy city clerk? Is the term going to expire on 31st of December? Can you answer me that?
Yes, I can. In conversation with other staff members, the city attorney, the decision was made to go ahead at this time. So come January 1, this city will be able to continue right on with this business.
I'll go along with designating the duties of said deputy city clerk. That I concede. But I cannot see why, on God's green earth, I'm sorry, I'll withdraw that three-letter word, why you want to appoint a deputy city clerk treasurer? Is Eldon Long here tonight? Was that coordinated with our incoming mayor? No. Why not? Is this your way of trying to maintain control? I think it is and I don't think you have a right, the right at all to appoint anybody to any position that starts after the 1st of January. I'm serious. I am real serious. And I will, if I have to, I will pay per time on the radio to explain what are you up to. I know you're up to no good. I know that because I've learned that. And to me, it don't make sense. Why do you want to do it? Why?
I just explained that, guy.
I know, but does it make sense to you? Think about it. Does it make sense that you, who goes out of office on 31 December, appointing a deputy city clerk treasurer effective 1 July? Thank you.
I just want to address this question because I'm actually the one who prepared this ordinance. I wrote it and I didn't ask the mayor before I prepared it. The council has already approved Cindy as the finance director. She was asked by the mayor to attend a bid opening and get familiar with the bid opening procedure, which she has done and I've turned over some information on that. The reason that I felt it was important to do this now is because when I leave office on December 31, there will be no city clerk until the new city clerk has been signed in. And in the event there is something important that needs a city clerk treasurer's attention, there will be no one to do that until someone has been sworn in. Cindy is one of only a very small number of people that are qualified to be appointed as deputy city clerk. And this is an appointment that the city clerk normally does make. It's not a designation by the mayor. And I completely do approve of Cindy in this position in that she's one of the very few employees who is qualified, who is experienced in the manner that would need to be for looking at these documents and executing them. But she lives in Lowell, which is a requirement, and she's generally available in the office. Now with the new city clerk duties adjusted as the council has seen fit, the new city clerk will not be in the office. And if something comes up before the first council meeting in January and/or before Jackie is sworn in, this is Jackie, by the way, your new city clerk-elect, who's watching tonight, then somebody needs to be available to execute documents on behalf of the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Darren?
I really have a question for Mr. Kicklack.
Sure.
I don't know if you've seen this, but, you know, this ordinance, we're appointing Cindy by ordinance to this position, naming her by, is this the way to do this? Because if she were to leave, we're going to go back and amend an ordinance that specifically lists her by name as the deputy clerk.
I think that's a great point, Darren. That's a very good point. You want to find a way to have some consistency, some reliability, but you also don't necessarily want to be locked into an ordinance, right? And you could amend this ordinance in a few real simple ways. One is you could say, this office shall be reappointed, you know, or shall be reappointed or another appointment made on January 15th or January 30th of each year or of every other year. That way your incoming mayor, you know, you don't want to say the mayor has, the incoming mayor has control over, you know, necessarily the elected position, but this position is, you know, someone who the clerk and the mayor should agree upon, really quite frankly the council as well. Jeanette's right. It's typically appointed by the clerk itself. You could do that, but the reason you did this ordinance, the reason, you know, Jeanette was just talking about writing it, is because of the way you've changed the clerk's position.
That's right.
So you want to have someone in place right now. The ordinance makes sense because you're creating the office, okay? And that makes sense. But you could certainly either do another ordinance real quick or amend this one to say, you know, shall be reappointed. And that way Mayor Long can work with your new clerk and the council and say, okay, this person makes sense right now. I don't think anyone disagrees with that, right? Cindy makes sense. But, you know, maybe in four years, when, like you said, when Cindy's gone, or Cindy don't want to do it anymore or something like that, you wouldn't have to write another ordinance. So an amendment like that could be done right now while you're adopting.
Yeah, I certainly think we should amend it to at least take Cindy's name out of it as far as the ordinance goes. Now, we can certainly, you know, appoint her as another motion or whatever, but I wouldn't want her name listed in the ordinance as, because that kind of locks her in for all time until the law has changed. You know, that's...
I would agree with that.
I don't know if there's any other changes we make, but that's certainly what I'd recommend that we, that we look at if we adopt this.
It would be more of a revision than just pulling her name out. Tom, wouldn't you agree it would be a little more...
So we'd want to rephrase that section one to say the...
Finance director, perhaps, meaning by job title.
The deputy city clerk treasurer would be appointed...
They may not live in Lowell.
Annually.
That's why I'm saying there may, there may be a little more wording necessary than just taking her name out, because they do have to live in Lowell, for one thing. They do ordinarily, they are appointed by the city clerk, but the wording that you did put in the ordinance that was passed regarding the city clerk's duties for the coming term negate that. It's not appropriate. And I wanted to get it done before I leave office so that it's done and in effect on the 1st of January. And it'll be effective right away in that if I'm not available in December, she can carry on the duties too, for that matter. Tom's writing.
Yes, Tom's rewriting here, I believe, adding some language for it.
Probably makes sense to add the information to reappoint after the new administration is in on the 15th of each year.
However they want to do that.
Absolutely.
Big deal.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
2011.
To your appointments.
How do y'all want to appoint each successive? Mayor Long, Mayor-elect Long, he might want to get, he might want to come with a lectern and...
He's talking?
No, sir. How do y'all want to reappoint? You want to have this be where the city clerk and the mayor present an appointment, assuming that they always get along? Or do you want to have the mayor bring you an appointment to be approved by the clerk and the council? Or do you just want to say mayor and council, like you do commissioners?
Tom, I may just alleviate some of this, okay? Appreciate Jeanette. 1012, Morel Place, Eldon Long. Jeanette, I appreciate your description there and alleviating some of the misunderstandings. I do think what you all have discussed concerning Cindy's name, we probably ought to address that as that position. I don't see any problem with that being tagged and she has the very same appointment I would have recommended. Thank you.
The only problem with that is that the finance director may not always be a resident of Lowell and that is a requirement to serve as deputy city clerk.
I'm going to add that to the ordinance.
Okay.
And so, okay, let me read it like this, y'all. What I would do is, someone consider an amendment, taking your ordinance, strike the name Cindy Cantilizzi, as much as we all like and respect her. And say, there is hereby created the office of deputy cert... Okay? So there is hereby created the office of deputy city clerk treasurer who shall perform duties as follows. And Jeanette, I'll get with you on this.
Mm-hmm.
You got one, two, three, four, and five, okay? And then we're going to have a new section two. Two will become three and three will become four. And the new section two will read deputy cert...
And the new section 2 will read, "Deputy clerk treasurer shall be an employee..."
A resident of Lowell.
Right? Yep. An employee and shall be a resident of the city of Lowell, okay? All right. And then a new section 3, move 2 to 3, I mean 4 and 3 to 5. A new section 3, "The appointment of deputy city clerk shall expire on January 30th of each odd year." And...
That's next year.
Yep. Well, yeah, I'm just, you know, we'll start the process. And "Shall be appointed by the mayor with approval of the city council." Does that make sense?
Do you say appointed or do you say recommended by the...
I'm sure recommended by the mayor.
And appointed by the council.
Appointed by the, yeah. However our language is.
Doesn't that have to be appointed by the clerk legally?
No. The clerk may appoint deputies, okay? They may. The problem with the clerk appointing deputies is, and has been in this state, is that the clerk may not appropriate funds for such a thing, all right? So if you, if the clerk had, you know, three really, really great candidates who were good buddies of the clerk and he or she wanted them to be deputies, she could appoint them, but there's no way for the city to pay them unless the council approves them. So that appointment law has sort of evolved in practice to be where, if a clerk needs a deputy, they usually come to the city council and, with the mayor, and they get one appointed. So you're sort of skipping that part. But that's why I was sort of, remember, I was sort of painfully saying, "Do you guys want to put the clerk in here somehow?" Because we could, you know?
Tom, the way I understand you said that this appointment will be up December, or January 31st of next year.
I put 30th. We put 31st.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to get us started, because otherwise, you're writing an ordinance that says, has a year number in it.
Yeah.
You know, so it's in 2013.
That's fine.
It'll be just a housekeeping thing that y'all will do, probably your meeting in January. Go ahead and reappoint it before it expires, you know? And then do that every two years, you know? Does that make sense?
So it's now we can... Tom, so it's now we can go ahead and approve the ordinance with amendments and then also approve the appointment tonight also?
Mm-hmm. I sure can.
So...
The appointment is going to last until January 30th, but yeah. That way, you'll have someone on the ground running on the 1st of January, which is important, like Jeanette just explained. And then that also incoming mayor and council can take a look at her.
I'd like to move that we pass the ordinance on third and final reading by title only with all the amendments.
That Tom just said.
That Tom just said.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Sure. Hala Alred.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Aaron Brock.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
This will be ordinance...
I guess that's actually suspending the rules, isn't it? We can't pass it without...
Right.
It has to be read by title only before we can pass it.
So it's going to be read now.
So we've got to vote it.
An ordinance appointing a deputy city clerk treasurer and designating duties of said deputy city clerk treasurer. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Keith Williams.
Yes.
Did he ask for a roll call?
Pardon?
Did you ask for a roll call?
No, but I'm glad he didn't, because may I just say, I'm going to correct the reading real quick, y'all, of the title.
Correct the reading.
I've amended the reading. It's going to now say, "An ordinance creating the office of deputy city clerk treasurer and designating duties of said deputy clerk treasurer." So now you can ask for a roll call.
Roll call.
Did everybody get that? Keith Williams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Hala Alred.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
This will be ordinance number 878. Now we need to approve Cindy.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Cindy as the new city clerk treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Hala Alred.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Aaron Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, so let me get this. You guys were definitely in front of that appointment, city clerk.
It doesn't...
It says.
Oh, it's in writing.
It's in there.
It's in writing. It's there.
Next item on the agendas.
You can always be...
It's not an elected position.
No.
I don't agree. Okay, thanks, Ronnie.
It's not an elected position.
No, no, Ronnie, you're not.
Because one of the requirements is to be an employee of the city.
Yeah. You have to be an employee of the city. What the council does, the council can undoes.
Next item on the agenda is a consideration request by Benton County Regional Solid Waste Management District Board, and if requested is approved, consideration of appropriation of funds memo to authorize a transfer of unallocated funds into the 2010 amended general fund budget to the administration budget for the purpose of meeting unbudgeted expenditures. Sean?
Y'all have the description of what the... What's passing now?
Enjoy it, because you won't have that ball, right?
The memo sheet you all have basically has all the details for the request.
So, Sean, can you expand on this a little bit? So tell me, this, every, what's this 30 cents per capita? What's that, what's that fees? Who's paying those fees exactly?
That's a charge assessed by the county.
So every resident is going to be, their bill's going up 30 cents, is what you're saying by this?
That's the way, not to the resident, no. This has nothing to do with our solid waste contract that we have with rolloff to remove residential waste. This is a county assessed, I believe. Let me introduce Wes Hoag, who's chairman of the solid waste, and he can better field the questions you'll have.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to address the council, Mr. Mayor. And I'm Wes Hoag. I'm the mayor with the city of Gentry. I'm also the chairman of the solid waste district board, the Benton County Solid Waste District. Hello, Tom, how you doing, sir?
Good morning.
I'll answer any questions. The first question was, the 30 cent per capita fee. Currently, all first-class cities in Benton County, Benton County has formed its own solid waste district. We were originally part of the Northwest District, which involved about seven counties, and then it reduced down to about four counties, a four-county district, then three-county district, and then Benton County not getting much bang for a buck for the money that was put into the district on behalf of the county. We weren't receiving the services. And so all the cities decided, and this happened five or six years ago, all of the cities decided that Benton County, being its own district, would return a lot more bang for its buck to its citizens. And so that's how we became the Benton County Solid Waste District. The 50 cent per capita fee is a fee that is assessed by the members. Lowell is a member, all first-class cities are a member. And that is a fee that is assessed to each first-class city and all those that are not first-class cities above 2,000 or any city above 2,000 population. Any city below 2,000 population is paid by the county. So the county, everybody in the county pays a 50 cent per capita fee, either through the city or through the county. And what has happened, I'm not sure how much time you've had to read the memo, what has happened is, since 1989 to 91, whenever the legislature created the enabling legislation for solid waste districts, they also created a lot of unfunded mandates. They created a lot of mandates that go along with being a solid waste district, and everybody has to be in a solid waste district, no matter if you're in a county solid waste district or a multi-county solid waste district. And they created many mandates that go along with being in a district, and they created a mechanism for which to collect fees on the haulers. And those, that legislation had never been challenged. Everybody was quite comfortable with the way it was going and everybody... There's at least five to seven districts that charge fees exactly the same way. That structure had never been challenged. It had always been understood that the method of collecting the fees was completely acceptable. It was believed to be the intent of the legislation. In fact, even in the legislation, I won't get too deep into it because I disagree with the judge's ruling. We lost a lawsuit to rolloff services. And the judge, Judge Scott, determined that the method that we were using to collect fees, he believed was not lawful under the legislation. What that did was that left our district at a huge shortfall in our operating revenues for 2010. The only remedy to this is going to be legislation, and we plan to address this with the legislature next year. I don't see that as being a problem, but we won't be receiving any revenues off of that until mid-2011 to late 2011, depending on when new legislation takes effect. So what we find ourselves is in a terrible shortfall. We still have the mandates from the state to provide services and to do certain reporting, but we didn't have the money to operate. And so that's why the board decided, you know, let's go out with our hat in our hand and ask for an act of benevolence from our member entities, of which Lowell is one of those. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to squeak by until we can address this with the legislature and have our revenue stream reinstated and start operating at full capacity. Right now, we've reduced our staff. The director, the first thing the director did was to cut her own hours. She's operating on about eight to 10 hours a week now. We still have, the services, we have not reduced services because we wanted to keep the service side up and running because that's the most critical part, is the services we provide to the citizens of Benton County. But being in a critical juncture trying to prepare for this legislative session, we needed the director to be on board, and having the director operating on eight to 10 hours a week is kind of difficult for us. So I believe, to bring you up to speed, every other city in the county and every other city with the exception of Solom Springs has already approved the appropriation of the additional 30 cents per capita. And so that leaves Solom Springs and Lowell would be the last two entities. Hopefully, that you might approve this expenditure for us. And if you have any questions about any of the details, I'll be glad to answer them. These solid waste districts are kind of a big animal to get your arms around, but I've got all night, ladies and gentlemen. Any questions you have, I'll be glad to answer them.
So when does this go into effect?
I'm sorry?
When does this go into effect if we approve this tonight?
Just a one-time thing?
We're asking for the money like last week. No, I, we've received, we've received funding from a lot of cities already, so that's kind of helping us get through the rough times till the end of the year. We're not going to have any carryover funds starting 2011. We do have some forms of revenue, and so we're going to absolutely do everything we can to squeak by until we reinstate a revenue stream. But no, we're asking for the funds immediately, I mean...
The total cost to the city is what, $1,500? Am I looking at this right? 1,503, 90?
With this amendment...
With this amendment, we already paid 25, that's additional money. $1,500.
1,504 for the remainder of 2010.
It'll be 80 cents per capita? Is that it?
For, yeah, a one-time, this is a one-time request for benevolence. And so in 2011, it will revert back to the 50 cents per capita.
If you've lost your funding, how can you fund it next year on 50 cents, but you kept this year?
We're hoping that we're only going to have to make it about the first six months of 2011. We do have other revenue streams, but we, a lot of our, a lot of our topping costs are administrative, like our director, that's one of our big expenses. We immediately eliminated the assistant director's position, which is another pretty, a pretty high-paying salary position also. And so we do have our traditional revenue streams, but it is going to be very difficult. That's a very good question, Mayor. And as I'm standing here tonight, we haven't gone through the budget for 2011, and I guess the short answer is, gee, I don't know at this time.
So it'll be, as of now, it'll be 50 cents again in 2011.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're not, since we're looking at this as only a short-term remediation, we're not looking at any long-term raise in, because if we restore our revenue stream, it's not going to be necessary to raise, to raise the standard per capita. So that's, and you have to keep in mind, this is an act of benevolence on your part. You're not under any obligation to make this payment at all. This is, we're trying to survive. We're trying to continue to provide the services. And you're under no obligation. You can tell me to get out the door if you wanted to.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request by Benton County Regional Solid Waste Management District.
So moved.
Second.
May I, yeah? Thank you, Mayor. You have an appropriation memo now that, you know, the finance department does when we spend money in Lowell that's unallocated. And you can just, if you want to respond to the call, simply approve this, okay? Now, I just want to be real clear, though, about one thing. This is not charity. Benevolent, maybe, but you are receiving, I mean, not only a valuable service for your membership, but you have to be a member of this or some solid waste, and this is really the only one you want to be a member of. So it isn't that you're doing charity to some organization out there. What you're doing is just paying a little more than you typically have been, and it's 50 cents per capita. So just to be real clear about that, the memo talks about benevolence, and that's a great way to think about it. But you all are actually exchanging your funds, your taxpayer money, for valuable services, quite frankly, essential services. So I just want to be clear about that as you consider whether you want to approve the memo. So I just want to be clear about that, as you consider whether you want to approve the memo.
May I respond to that? Thank you, Tom, that's, that brings a lot of clarity, but the board did not feel like we wanted to impose higher, higher fees on our member entities.
I made the motion, and Paula made the second.
That's to approve the memo?
Yes. That is correct.
Y'all will get a considerable raise once the census is complete, is that correct?
Uh, no, because, well, we, we could, yes, if Benton County, Benton County has, has gone up considerably. A lot of that's already been absorbed by Bella Vista becoming incorporated. Of course, the county, we lose it in the county, we gain it in the city, but as Benton County grows, yes, we're gaining more money. But as we gain more population, we also have to provide more services, because there's more people to provide those services to.
Keith, was your motion to approve the request and the appropriation both?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
This will be appropriations memo number 14-2010.
Next item is more or less a housekeeping budget, or resolution. It's adopting an amended 2010 budget for the city of Lowell. Mary?
I have made this amendment to the 2010 budget, to bring it into line with what actual expenses and receipts are. The, if you do pass the resolution to do the 2010 budget amendment, I would liken the motion for you to include the 13-2010 appropriations memo, and the 14-2010 appropriations memo, so I can, those are both 2010 expenses, and I can include those without coming back for more requests.
I hear a motion to include those in the amended budget.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
I'm gonna have a resolution to pass the amended budget.
We do, we do have a resolution.
I have this one.
Yeah, it's right there.
Next item is a resolution adopting an amended 2010 budget for the city of Lowell, Arkansas. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented and revised.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
This will be resolution number 10-18.
Mr. Mayor, I know we got a couple more items, but I would like to amend the agenda to add a couple more items after these two items. One is to consider our city attorney and what his position is with the city, because we've got a new city clerk coming in, and I just want to make sure we're, we're clarified on that, that what, what the job duties are for each, each attorney. And the second one is, I'd like to consider the next meeting, the, the item we tabled tonight about the planning commissioners. Maybe put it up for discussion to whether we should bring that up at the next meeting. So, I know that's a lot, but...
Yeah, could you put that in writing?
Could you clarify it, break it down?
I can break it down, I can break it down into, to two items.
You want to amend the agenda?
The first one is because of, because we do have a new city clerk, or not city clerk, city attorney. And he was, he ran unopposed, and I just want to clarify that we have job duties for both Tom and the city attorney. Because I think we have an ordinance that separates out those duties, correct?
You have a copy of it.
Is it in here? Okay.
It was in the budget.
It's in the budget.
Okay.
In the budget. Next item.
Well, what about, what about, then the second item was, the second item was, basically when we tabled the, the planning commissioners, the reason I tabled it was because I thought that maybe that would give enough time to, for them to meet with a planning commission now. If any other questions came up, that we could discuss it. I do think we, we have two good candidates, and I hate for them to get discouraged and not, not reapply for the new mayor. So, I guess maybe we could discuss that. I know I'm confusing people, but...
What do you want to do?
Uh, just discuss it, bring it up.
Again?
Yeah.
Tonight?
If we, if, or put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I'm gonna have a motion to bring it off of the table.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I would like for that to be on the next agenda.
On the next agenda, in December.
Then we'll need a new motion, because the motion was to table it till 2011.
I don't think you need a motion, if you're gonna wait till then, just put it on the...
That's fine, just put it on the agenda then.
For 2011?
No.
December.
We can't, the motion was to, to table it to 2011.
You can put anything on the agenda, you can put anything on the agenda. I'm asking you to put that on the agenda, the item we tabled tonight.
Gotcha.
Next item on the agenda is how does the city council want to handle the 2011 budget review and approval process?
Think we should set a special meeting.
Mr. Mayor? Are you gonna have a session for the public to work with that budget review?
That's what we're in the process of setting up, Guy.
Okay, because I have quite a few questions on that budget review. I want to know how much surplus are, are we gonna maintain? Are not, I believe it's a $960,000 to $950,000 surplus? Is that, this is, you have been spending money kind of wildly, and I'm just, I'm just kind of afraid we're gonna go in the hole. That's why I know, I want to know if you're gonna have a citizen review.
I think it has to be made available to the public.
That ain't the question I asked you. Are you gonna have one and notify the public that, when it is?
Public hearing.
Are you gonna notify the public? That's the answer, yes, yes or no?
Required to have a public hearing.
No, but I have, I have an answer, I have a legal answer for that, Guy.
What'd you say, Tom?
I have, I have a legal answer for that.
Okay.
Every meeting, this meeting right now is a citizen review. Every meeting that we have is citizen review. We're lucky to be in this state where every day you can review documents and have, every citizen, believe it or not, you have to be citizen of Arkansas to use the FOI, but every citizen can have a citizen review every day. So this meeting is officially a review, and in fact, the courts call this meeting notice, and opportunity to be heard by everybody who lives in the city. So you're doing that right now, and, and they won't adopt tonight, I don't think. I'll be surprised if they adopt it tonight, so there'll be at least one other meeting.
How can I get my hands on a copy?
And, well, I'll give you mine.
Okay, I'll take it.
But also, they'll, they'll probably, if I know this council, I bet you they'll have a sort of an interim meeting. It's usually, it's around 4:30 Saturday morning, when all the citizens can come, whoever wants to, and spend all the time they want on the budget.
But you have to bring doughnuts.
When Perry took over as, as the mayor, we had, we had a fantastic session on the budget, did we not, Perry? We had a lot of people there, too. In fact, Jones called the cops because somebody got a Melanie's butt, because she won the voter in the city of Lowell. But you had it when you was elected mayor, and now I wonder if Eldon, is Eldon gonna have, have one, too?
I think that was a really good answer that I gave, and...
Very good, Tom.
Are you, are you gonna have a session, Eldon?
I mean, it, it was a really good answer, Guy, but I'm gonna go on anyway. Budgets, I want everybody to make sure everybody knows this, and anyone who's been coming to meetings at all, Simon knows, budgets can be changed every day and twice on Sunday, all right? There's nothing in stone about this budget. It can be passed today, an airplane can fall out of the sky, crush City Hall, need to build a new one, change tomorrow. So, just so everybody knows that about the budget, the state law requires that you have a budget passed, you know, by next year, January of next year, but that budget could be changed, you know, twice the next day. The budget is something that the auditors want to make sure sort of matches up with expenditures. That's why Mary and Cindy presents the, that sort of amendment at the very end of the year. But there's nothing in stone about it, and so while it's good to take a hard look at it, it can be changed. And so there art thou comforted, that there'll be plenty of time to look at the budget. Well, the, the great thing about representative democracy is that your representatives are sitting up here now, and you can probably access them as much as you like, but also, the council can always enlarge that time by vote. If you remember, we made that change, so they can always, and I think they freely do when they need to. Yes, sir.
Perry, if I might make a suggestion, in one of the prior years, I think each department got up and spoke about their budget individually, versus I think last year, we kind of just looked through the budget and discussed it. I would prefer that each department get up and speak about their budget, so that we have questions to ask each individual department about their budget. So if we could schedule a meeting, that would be my preference, as far as to go over at least the budget as it is currently presented.
And I, and I would think that we need to do it after the election, the runoff. So the, so the new incoming council members have a chance to, to be there, and they know, you know, their comments can be heard and concerns.
Oh, it's a separate work session, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, like we did before.
When do you want to have this work session?
I think after the runoff makes sense.
When?
The runoff's next Tuesday.
Yep. You want to do the 30th?
The following Thursday, the 25th?
That's Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, oh, sorry.
Let's do it after Thanksgiving.
We won't do it on Thursday.
We won't do it on Thursday.
Second would be the following Thursday. Or 30th would be a Tuesday.
30th would be a Tuesday.
30th is the first Tuesday after election, after Thanksgiving.
Is that pretty fine with the following? But that, that doesn't really give the new folks a chance to look over the budget. I would say you'd need to at least do it the following Thursday, so they've got a couple of days to look over the budget. The second, December 2nd, then, I believe?
What day is that? Thursday?
Thursday.
I'm fine with that. 6:30, 6 o'clock? I'd say 6:30. It can take some time.
What time do you want to have it, Paula?
6:30.
6:30, okay with everyone?
6:30?
Do you want to have it here? City Hall? We do.
And it's not a meeting, not a, a meeting of any kind that we're, that is paid for, it's just a work session.
It's a work session. Okay, everybody on board, having a budget review work session, December the 2nd?
And along with the new council members and mayor. Who's gonna be responsible for getting the new council members, the budget proposed, whatever amended, whatever we have that time?
Finance department, tax...
So we, we are working on that?
We're working on, with them, on things, getting them documents and brochures and sworn in and...
We have one of them with a question right now.
If I may, I hate to be a fly in the ointment here, but I'm under contractual obligation to be in Fort Worth, Texas, Dallas area, December 2nd through 5th. I'm supremely confident Ms. Latham can look after the, the needs and wishes of our constituents in our district, but if there's any way to move it to the following Tuesday, that would be wonderful. If not, then I'm sure Ms. Latham will...
What's the day of the following Tuesday?
It's the following Tuesday.
9th. Oh, 7th, Tuesday.
Anything but the 2nd through the 5th, quite frankly, and if I don't go down there, it'll cost me a fortune by the time, by the time they get even. So I have to go the 2nd through the 5th, I just don't have any options. Anyway, I appreciate your, your patience.
That day works for me, but... The 7th will be November 30.
The 6th or the 7th, whatever's the body, the 8th or the 9th, whatever the body's pleasure. Just not the 2nd through the 5th.
The 7th works great for me.
So 5:00 AM the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
I appreciate your patience.
I moved the week for the 7th. Same time, 6:30, same place, right here. You guys okay?
Not working for everybody else? December 7th.
Dean's bringing doughnuts, right?
Set a Tuesday, Jeanette?
Subway, Subway, all right.
You're bringing barbecue from Fort Worth.
Barbecue. A little bit of Dicky's in order.
Okay, someone, the next item is someone, Jeanette doesn't remember who, requested changing the council meeting from December 21 to December 14.
That was, that was me, Mayor, I had to put that on there. December 21st is that Tuesday of the Christmas week, and I, I know I'll be traveling, and I think it generally impacts a lot of people negatively to have a meeting on a big holiday week. So I just wanted to move it up a week to the 14th, if everyone was okay with that.
What does the council want to do?
Yes.
Move it to the 14th?
Thank you.
I will not be here the 14th, I'll be out of town on a personal business trip. So the council will have to nominate someone to conduct the meeting.
That would be your last? So this will be his last meeting?
Any other items on the agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.